Before we proceed with this evening's agenda, we ask that you please rise and join us in to leave the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's finally in the right spot. Okay, the chair recognizes Planner Matthew Calado for the reading of items recommended to be recessed this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. The planning department would like to recommend the following items be recessed because the applicants are not ready for heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number one, 2012-04 Storybooks Home Nest Concert; number two, 2012-02 Carlson Associates Kings Park; number three, 2010-06 KVC Holdings; under waiver requests, number four, number seven, seven, three Scholar Estates Comec; number five, number eleven, thirty-five Twomey Plaza St. James; number six, number nine, one, one, A Glen Hole Northern St. James; and under amendment of conditional approval, it's a two eighty-eight application, second map of San Remo.
Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard on the items recommended to be recessed? Are they being done? Is there a motion?
Motion to recess items one through seven as read.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The items are recessed. Under new hearings and decisions, we have an extension of a preliminary subdivision for Richwood Estates in Hopkuck.
The applicant is requesting an extension of conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision known as number ten fifty-seven point one map of Richwood Estates. The preliminary map of number ten fifty-seven point one map of Richwood Estates was granted conditional preliminary approval by the planning board on November eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen. The preliminary approval is valid for a period of one hundred and eighty days that expired on May eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Since that date, this application has received two ninety-day extensions and a six-month extension which expired on May eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen. The applicant states that they have yet to obtain a road opening permit from the town of Islip and have accepted an offer from Suffolk County to purchase the property for open space. The planning department has reviewed the request and has no objection to an extension and recommends a time period of six months. The planning department offers a final resolution for the board's consideration. Planning board resolution number blank two thousand and seventeen, extension of conditional preliminary approval, number ten fifty-seven point one map of Richwood Estates. Whereas the planning board has considered the request to extend the conditional preliminary approval for number ten fifty-seven point one map of Richwood Estates, now therefore be it, first resolved that the planning board hereby grants a retroactive six-month extension of time to the conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision known as number ten fifty-seven point one map of Richwood Estates, beginning May eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen to November eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Good evening. For the applicant, Sir Timon Ballen by Michael A. Amoroso, one hundred and eighty Moon Parkway, Hopkuck. Just here in support of the application, we would appreciate if you could give us the additional time to get into contract and hopefully even close by the end of November.
I trust negotiations with the county are moving forward?
Yeah, the whole issue, it has nothing to do monetarily, it was just the location of the entrance point to get into the subdivision. And it's a little bit more complicated because there's two towns involved. And the access point is through a lot that's within the town of Islip, but the subdivision itself is wholly within the town of Smithtown. So that's really caused some issues. But finally, they've been resolved. We got a letter recently from the town of Islip approving the relocation of the entrance point, which was done just a few months ago or even less than May. The town approved the amendment to the map, and so we should now be able to go forward with the contract with the town.
Fine. Any members of the board have any questions? Any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Are they being done? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
In the matter of number ten fifty-seven decimal one map of Richwood Estates, I move that we close the hearing.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is closed and recessed, right? Were we closing or recessed?
We just closed the hearing.
Right, we just did, okay.
On the merits of the resolution.
Okay. And on the resolution itself, do I have a motion?
In the matter of planning board resolution number blank two thousand and seventeen, extension of conditional preliminary approval for number ten fifty-seven decimal one map of Richwood Estates, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is an extension of final approval, map of Norl Hollow.
The applicant is requesting an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision known as number eleven fifty-eight map of Norl Hollow. The final map of number eleven fifty-eight map of Norl Hollow is granted conditional final approval by the planning board on December fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. The conditional final approval is valid for a period of one hundred and eighty days that expires on June fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen. The chairman has signed the final maps and the applicant has submitted the maps to the Suffolk County Clerk's office. However, the filing process at the county clerk's office may take a few weeks. This extension was requested to ensure that the final plan is valid when the map is filed. The planning department has reviewed the request and has no objection to an extension of the conditional final approval. Planning department offers a final resolution for the board's consideration. Planning board resolution number two thousand, number blank two thousand and seventeen, extension of conditional final approval, number eleven fifty-eight map of Norl Hollow. Whereas the planning board has considered the request to extend the conditional final approval for number eleven fifty-eight map of Norl Hollow, now therefore be it, first resolved, the planning board hereby grants a retroactive six-month extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as number eleven fifty-eight map of Norl Hollow, beginning June fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen to December fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Okay, I understand, Mr. Marco, the council is not present this evening, but supports the successful.
Yes, any similar affidavit as well.
Okay. Any members of the public wish to be heard on this? Are they being done? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
In the matter of number eleven fifty-eight map of Norl Hollow, I move that we close the hearing.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The hearing is closed and on the resolution itself?
In the matter of planning board resolution number blank two thousand and seventeen, extension of conditional final approval for eleven fifty-eight map of Norl Hollow, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Next item on the agenda, extension of a performance bond for Hummingbird Estates, a three-lot subdivision in St. James.
The applicant did not post the sign on the property.
Okay, so then I guess a motion to table, recess the public hearing and table the resolutions in order. Do I have a motion to recess the public hearing? Now, next date would be July twelfth.
Yes.
Okay, we're up to which one?
Eleven thirty-six.
Hummingbird.
Oh, Hummingbird. Okay. I move, okay.
To recess the public hearing?
Yeah, in the matter of number eleven thirty-six map of Hummingbird Estates, I move that we recess the hearing to the July twelfth meeting of the planning board.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And a motion to table the resolution till July twelfth?
In the matter of number eleven thirty-six map of Hummingbird Estates, I move that we table the hearing to the meeting of July twelfth, two thousand and seventeen.
Second, after the table and the resolution.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The item is tabled. Next item on the agenda is an amendment of filed map of Harbor Trees, section two, Kings Park.
The applicant is requesting to amend the filed map of number two ninety-one map of Harbor Trees, section two, so as to change Suffolk County tax map number eight hundred dash eight dash three dash fifty-nine from land to be dedicated as parkland to a buildable lot. The update, this request was scheduled to be heard at the planning board's April fifth, two thousand and seventeen, meeting, but was recessed to May third, two thousand and seventeen because the applicant did not appear at the meeting and did not post the required sign on the property. Then, at the May third meeting, a planning board member indicated that he had inspected the site and that the sign was not visible from the street. As a result, the board recessed the hearing to June fourteenth and instructed the applicant to place the sign in a location that was visible to pass her by on the street. The final map of number two ninety-one map of Harbor Trees, section two, received final approval from the planning board on September first, nineteen seventy-one. Final approval was rescinded and a new approval resolution was adopted on March fifteenth, nineteen seventy-two. Subsequently, the map was filed in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk on May eighth, nineteen seventy-two. As shown on the filed map, the lot directly east of lot number one oh five was supposed to be dedicated to the town as parkland. However, on February fifth, nineteen seventy-six, the developer filed a correction in the Suffolk County Clerk's office stating that the words "park to be dedicated to the town of Smithtown" should be removed and lot one oh five A put in its place. At that time, the Suffolk County Clerk did not require planning board approval for such a change, and the planning board never approved this change. The town released a performance bond for the subdivision on May thirty-first, nineteen seventy-seven, indicating that the park dedication was not required. The parcel was never developed and was eventually acquired by Suffolk County in nineteen eighty-eight for failure to pay property taxes. The current property owner purchased the property from the county in two thousand. In two thousand and sixteen, the planning department received an inquiry from the owner's attorney regarding zoning requirements for building a single-family dwelling on the subject lot. The planning department informed the attorney of the history of the site and recommended that the owner apply to the planning board to amend the approved map to legalize the buildable status of the lot. The planning department has reviewed the request and has no objection to the amendment of the filed map for the following reasons. One, the town released a performance bond indicating that dedication of parkland was not required. Two, the town had the opportunity to contest the county's acquisition of the property, and there is no record that it did so. Three, the town had the opportunity to purchase the land at auction and designate it as a parkland and did not do so. Four, the lot complies with the minimum lot area and furnished requirements for the R fifteen zoning district. Building on this lot will not increase the density permitted in the neighborhood nor will it change the overall character of the neighborhood. Five, at the time of purchasing the property, the owner was unaware that the lot was not buildable and that an erroneous correction was filed with the county. The highway and engineering departments have no objection to the request. The Department of Environment and Waterways has not yet completed the SECRE recommendation. The planning department recommends that the board close the public hearing and reserve decision pending the SECRE review.
Okay. Hi. My name is Sabatino Aionopli with my mother Giuseppeina, who is part owner of the property. Yeah, it's been, I mean, you said it well, it's been an ongoing issue. We just, I'm looking to build a single-dwelling home on the property. And, you know, last year we started with zoning and we did surveys of the land, and then once we got to the part where we met with the architects, we kind of met with that issue where we couldn't proceed further until this was resolved, and I guess so we are today.
Okay. When did you purchase the property?
They purchased it in two thousand, and then, you know, they're still the owners of the property, and then I will be purchasing it off them, I guess, and then building a single-dwelling home.
Okay. Any members of the board have any questions on this? Any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Okay, please come forward.
May I just mention something? The affidavit of posting that was submitted was dated for the original hearing back in May. However, the applicant has agreed to file a new affidavit, and he said that he has pictures showing that the signs were posted.
June seventh.
June seventh, so they've been up for more than five days.
I've seen the signs.
Okay. It's moved, we're gonna have to table this because we're waiting for the environmental impacts. So, but ma'am, if you'd like to come forward, it'd be heard.
My name is Ellen Lindsay-Elde, and I live at eighteen Mountain Road Lane.
You can spell your name for the record, please.
Yeah, Elde, B as in boy, E L D as in David, Y. And that is that I am at lot fifty-eight, and we're talking about lot fifty-nine. I guess you guys don't see pictures of it, but I thought.
Your adjacent neighbor?
My adjacent neighbor, the property abuts against the lot they want, uh-uh. I'm the owner of the lot, number eighty-six on the Harbor Trees map, section two in Kings Park. The parcel is south and abuts the land originally dedicated as parkland and rebuilt. All the homeowners believe that this land would stay as such because of the zoning regulations that didn't really allow enough room to build without changing from one-third to less than one-third. And those laws require that setback, so we assume that never could be built on. I must object to the subdivision of said property as there will be a loss of privacy for my home, complete loss, and kind of a devaluation of my home, too. I've never objected to any proposal or changes to the development within the neighborhood before, but this is a huge change of that parkland piece of property that was seen as a green belt changes. And I'm gonna throw in for color, that when my husband and I moved there in nineteen seventy-three, we did so and picked that piece of property because it was designated as a green belt. Even though we were opposite King Park State Hospital and could hear the patients, even though it was at that time allowed it to be a sewer district, we still felt that this was a valuable piece of property because of the green belt piece and that it couldn't be built on. And so that's why I'm here to object to the subdivision of the property. And I know that this went through, I have a lot of the documentation of some of the difficulties that happened with the county and Suffolk County and taxes and the planning board, but I just had to come to object to this change of subdivision. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Care to respond?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I had one question and one response. You know, I have, we haven't obviously been a resident of the town, so obviously we can't imagine what the neighbors would feel with changing of the property, and we haven't been there for a long time, so I'm not gonna pretend like I do. I know my parents wouldn't have bought the property if it was presented in a way where it wasn't buildable for a single-dwelling home or if there was anything else to do with it. But, you know, they was presented in a way where it was a good property to buy on, a good block to build on, and they moved forward with those plans with that intent. They saved the property for years because they wanted to give it to either me or my sister when we were at the time of having that opportunity. So honestly, I do feel for that issue with the neighbors, but at the same time, you know, we were put in a position where now we have this property where we would like to build, but at the same time, you know, we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place because we wouldn't have, and they wouldn't have endeavored in that opportunity if it was presented in an accurate way at the time. And then the one question I had is, is there any way to know ahead of the time prior to the next meeting if that SECRE report would be ready or not?
Yes, you can, you can call the planning department prior to the meeting, and we would let you know if the SECRE was.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so as I mentioned, we will have to table this due to the lack of that report. This is, I, for me, it's a rather difficult situation or decision to make because I went through the file and the missteps on the part of the county clerk's office back in the early nineteen seventies, I think, were horrendous because if developer shows up at the county clerk's office and says, this is no longer to be dedicated to parkland, and please make this now a buildable lot, and the county clerk's office concur. Subsequent to that, the council to the planning board at that time, this, we go way back into the early seventies, wrote a letter to the county clerk's office saying that an error has been made, and perhaps you should revisit your procedures on dealing with such matters. So this has a long history of mistakes, and I think, you know, on the town's part, in like nineteen seventy-six, I recall, for some reason, the town released the performance bond, so it's something I'm grappling with. So perhaps over the next month, I can come to terms with your situation as well as the concerns of the neighbors, which I think are quite valid because people buy homes because they're located next to parklands and purchase a lot. So this is something I will deal with myself in making my decision, but I think at this point, we have a motion to table. Shall we, I think maybe.
It'd be better to keep the hearing open, though.
I would think so, yeah.
Because in case there's something in the SECRE or anybody else wants to put something else onto the record.
That was my, gonna be my recommendation. So sir, if you'd like to speak, please come forward.
Yes, my name is Anthony Adamo, and I live just about across the street from that piece of property. And I would just like to ask the applicant, what price will that house be or approximately when it's completed? Is he going to sell it? Or is he going to live in it? Because the value on the homes on Twin Oaks Drive are pretty nice values. So if this home is of lesser value, it's gonna be a detriment to the rest of the community there. So that's the only question I have.
I don't know if he can respond to, you know, what his asking price would be, but if, I would assume.
I don't intend to.
Please go.
That's my only question.
I have family in the area, very close family there, so I intend to be here, but I would never build a home that would in any way lessen the character of the area or lessen the value of the area.
So the home would be comparable to.
At least comparable, yes.
All right. Any questions from the board or, oh, we have one more person?
Hi, my name is Nancy Bachaller, and I live pretty much across the street also. Do you want me to spell it? B A C H T H A L E R. What I'm a little confused about is if we all had a third of an acre that we had to, that we had our home built on, how can this house be built on less than a third of an acre? I just don't understand. It's also, I would appreciate if somebody could do a visual inspection of this because this is on a curve, and that would be a blind driveway going out. I think it's very dangerous, but that would be up to you to decide, okay?
Well, it's not gonna be voted on tonight, so everybody on the board will have an opportunity to go out there or want to look at it.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to take a look at where this property is.
Yeah, I've been there.
Oh, then you know what I'm talking about.
It's irregularly shaped, it's almost like a pie-shaped property.
Well, it's not in the property, it's where it's located, on the curve that goes around, yes. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard on this? Any questions? No. I think a motion to recess the public hearing is in order. Is there a motion?
In the matter of number two ninety-one map of Harbor Trees, section two, I move that we recess the public hearing and reserve decision pending the SECRE review.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is recessed. On the resolution itself, motion to table?
In the matter of number two ninety-one map of Harbor Trees, section two, I move that we table.
I don't think there was a resolution.
No, there wasn't a resolution.
There is no resolution?
No, no, just a recommendation.
Okay, then you can withdraw the motion, and we can proceed to the next item on the agenda. You gotta go to the mic, please? Thank you.
I just wanted to ask, is there gonna be another variance for the next meeting? Or how will we be notified of the next meeting?
Well, it would be on the July twelfth agenda at this location.
Okay.
Same time. It will be, you know, it will be posted again in illegals, I believe, right? Are we doing illegals?
If you post it to a date certain, then it doesn't.
We don't have to, okay. But it will be on July.
Maybe the motion should be amended just to reflect that it's being recessed to July twelfth. I don't know if she said that.
It'd be recessed till July twelfth.
Will you have the SECRE by then?
I'm not sure, and I think they're, one of the reasons they're waiting is to address any public comments, so.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
So should we reconsider? Motion to reconsider? And?
What do we do if the SECRE is not in?
You could recess to the August meeting.
You want to recess till August? Can you know the SECRE will be in by then?
I don't know if the SECRE is gonna be.
We can just recess without a date, and then we have to repost it, so we have to keep it a specific date without making it reposted.
I think they're just, they wanna look at the public comments before they.
We can recess it to July twelfth, and if it's not ready, then we have to recess it, recess it again, that's all.
Do it sequentially, recess it till twelve.
Right, and if it's not ready, we can just recess it again.
Another motion to recess is necessary in July, you can do it in July.
Exactly. One step at a time.
I don't mind being recessed, but I just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna come to post the post every month.
We're avoiding, we're making it recessed to a date certain, so you don't have to go repost it.
Thank you so much.
Everybody's here, who's here now, will know that it's on for July twelfth, and also if anybody wants to find out whether it's actually gonna go forward that day, they can call the planning department that day or the day before, so they don't come down here for nothing. But for now, it's being set for July twelfth, so you don't have to repost it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, motion to recess till July twelfth?
In the matter of number two ninety-one map of Harbor Trees, section two, I move that we recess this matter until the July twelfth meeting, two thousand and seventeen meeting of the planning board.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The item is recessed until July twelfth. Next item on the agenda is a map of Open Meadow in Fort Solange.
The request is to subdivide a two-acre parcel of land into one-acre single-family residential lots. The subdivision known as number eleven fifty-six map of Open Meadow was initially heard at the January seventh, two thousand and fifteen, and February fourth, two thousand and fifteen planning board meetings. The subdivision could not be approved during these meetings because the proposed application was not in compliance with the zoning ordinance, and the planning board did not have the authority to grant all the necessary variances. Several variances, including minimum lot with an environmentally sensitive land variances, were subject to the board's zoning appeals. Subsequently, the applicant applied to the board's zoning appeals, and a hearing took place on May twelfth, two thousand and fifteen. Pursuant to town law, the BCA requested a recommendation from the planning board regarding the variances. The planning board reviewed the request at its July fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting and recommended approval of the variances. The board of zoning appeals received the planning board's recommendation, but ultimately denied the requests on October third, two thousand and fifteen. The applicant has remained on the planning board's agenda as a recessed hearing since two thousand and fifteen due to the fact that the planning board does not have the authority to approve the proposed subdivision. The planning department suggests to the chairman that the planning board close the public hearing and make a decision on the merits of the proposal. The board agreed to hold the public hearing on the proposal at the June fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen meeting. Last week, the applicant sent a letter requesting that this matter be recessed because he is in the process of revising the proposed subdivision map. The planning department does not object to recessing the hearing to a later date, but recommends that the board let the applicant know that the planning board does not have the authority to grant variances that would increase the yield of the property. Based on the information submitted, it appears that the yield of the property, in conformance with the zoning, is one lot. Any variances that would increase the yield of the property would have to be approved by the BCA. The planning department recommends this matter be recessed to the July twelfth, two thousand and seventeen meeting. The planning department also recommends that the planning board request the clerk to the board to inform the applicant in writing that the planning board does not have the authority to grant variances that would increase the yield of the property and that any such variances would require approval from the board's zoning appeals.
And the applicant is not present, or the representative is not here?
No.
So do we have a motion? Well, first of all, is anybody wish to be heard on this matter? There being no public comment, we have a motion to recess as requested?
In the matter of number eleven fifty-six map of Open Meadow, move that we recess this matter to the July twelfth, two thousand and seventeen meeting of the planning board.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The item is recessed. On the resolution itself, we.
There is no resolution.
There is no resolution, okay. Proceed to the next and final item on the agenda, Country Point Smithtown, a final
The applicant requests final approval to subdivide eleven point five three acres into sixty-nine townhouse units. The proposed development consists of thirteen residential buildings of four to eight units each, a recreation center, pool, sewage treatment plant, drainage reserve area, and three hundred twenty-six parking stalls. Ten percent of the units are to be set aside as affordable per the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. The subdivision known as number eleven sixty-seven map of Country Point at Smithtown West received conditional preliminary approval from the planning board on September twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen. At the March 3rd, 2017, on March 3rd, 2017, the applicant submitted the final application, which complied with all the conditions of preliminary approval. The site is also pending before the Board of Site Plan Review for site plan approval. The planning department performed an in-depth review of the proposal during the preliminary subdivision phase in our memorandum dated August 5th, 2016. No substantial changes or modifications have occurred to the proposal during the final subdivision review. The applicant has expressed possibly reducing some of the on-site parking, though they will still be in compliance with the minimum requirement. Parking is handled at the Board's Site Plan Review and has no impact on the planning board. The planning department finds the final application acceptable and recommends approval. The engineering department has found the application acceptable and recommends conditions K through M below in the conditions of approval. The highway department has no comment to offer because this is a private community and has no effect on town roads. The traffic safety department has reviewed the application and found it to be a private community that has no effect on town roadways. Pursuant to section 699-B of general municipal law, this application is subject to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, which requires that a minimum of 10% of the units be set aside as affordable workforce housing perpetuity. The applicant has proposed all units labeled E and F, eight units, about 11%, to be designated as affordable units. At this time, the town does not have a recommended or required procedure for ensuring that transfers of ownership of these units comply with the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. Therefore, the planning department recommends that the planning board condition any approval upon the town and the applicant agreeing upon a procedure and the applicant submitting that procedure in writing to the planning board prior to filing the map. Pursuant to section 239 end of general municipal law, this application was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission because the site is within 500 feet from a state highway, Route 347. The Suffolk County Planning Commission at its regular meeting held on April 5th, 2017, reviewed the application and approved it subject to the following condition, resolution number, resolution number ZSR-17-11. One, no final plat approval shall be granted by the town of Smithtown Planning Board until such time as the applicant has provided assurance to the planning board that Suffolk County Department of Health Services and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and/or any other appropriate agency is satisfied with the level of remediation at this subject property for the purposes of the proposed site. The planning board may not act contrary to the recommended condition except by a vote of a majority plus one of all members. The planning department does not recommend adopting this condition as a condition of approval for the following reasons. One, this site has been subject to secret review, in which a negative declaration was adopted by the board at the preliminary hearing. Two, during the preliminary application review, the county responded to the proposal by stating that it considered this application to be a matter of local determination. Three, the condition is redundant and that the town will not issue a building permit unless it has received all necessary approvals from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services and New York State DEC. Section 248-24 of the subdivision regulations states that each subdivision is required to show a park area of at least two acres per 100 buildings. However, the Court of Appeals has ruled that the town cannot require the reservation of park area unless the planning board determines on a case-by-case basis that a need for parkland exists with respect to the individual subdivision. Based on the community facility studies and the town's comprehensive plan, there is a need for parkland in the neighborhood in which the subdivision is situated. The subdivision share meeting the need is approximately 0.25 acres. In cases where the planning board determines that a suitable park cannot be located in the subdivision or is otherwise not practical, the subdivision is required to pay cash equivalent prior to filing the map. Given the location of the subdivision, a dedication for park space would not be practical. Therefore, the payment of an equivalent park fee established at $128,000 is recommended as a condition of final plat approval. One, letters assuring availability of utility services has been received from Suffolk County Water Authority and PSCNG. Two, Hop Dog School District has acknowledged a subdivision. Three, the amount of the inspection fee is estimated at $111,414. The amount of the park fee is $128,000. The amount of the performance bond is estimated at $1,392,665. The amount of the cash deposit is estimated at $34,500. And the amount of the performance bond we posted is $1,358,165. The planning department recommends approval and offers a fine resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2017, Suffolk County Planning Commission recommendation for number 1167 map of Country Point at Smithtown West. Whereas the planning board has reviewed the recommendations from the Suffolk County Planning Commission and has consulted with town staff and town procedures, now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board hereby overrides the recommended condition provided by the Suffolk County Planning Commission, resolution number ZSR-17-11, for the reasons stated in the planning department's memorandum. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2017, subdivision final approval, number 1167 map of Country Point at Smithtown West. Whereas the planning board has considered the request, 347 Building Company LLC to subdivide 11.53 acres into 69 townhouse units. Now therefore be it, first resolved that the planning board hereby approves the final plat of number 1167 map of Country Point at Smithtown West, subject to the following conditions. A, the applicant shall post a performance bond in form and amount specified by separate resolution of the planning board and for a term of two years. B, the applicant shall post a general liability insurance policy to run concurrently with the term of the performance bond and in accordance with our other provisions of section 248 of the code of the town of Smithtown subdivision regulations. C, the applicant shall pay an inspection fee and cash deposit as established by separate resolution of the planning board. D, the applicant shall pay park fee of $128,000. E, the applicant shall obtain the final approval of the drainage and regreting plans to the satisfaction of the town engineer. F, all necessary dedication papers shall be submitted by the developer to the planning department in complete and accurate form as one package, including but not limited to the performance bond, liability insurance policy, title report, and all required fees. G, a complete set of erosion sediment control plans will be submitted for approval by the engineering department as deemed necessary by the engineering department. H, the applicant shall receive Board of Site Plan Review approval before construction. I, the applicant shall demonstrate compliance with the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. The town and the applicant shall agree upon a procedure and the applicant shall submit that procedure in writing to the planning board prior to the filing of the map. J, before the map is filed, the applicant shall comply with section 322-57I of the zoning ordinance that this section pertains to the community association that shall be established by the developer. K, prior to the issuance of any building permits or land disturbing activities, the applicant shall provide proof to the engineering department that coverage has been obtained under New York State's pollutant discharge elimination system, general permit for storm morgue discharge from construction activity, permit number GP-015-002. L, prior to the commencement of construction, an approved set of New York State Department of Transportation Highway work permit plans shall be provided to the engineering department. Any site work, erosion, sediment control measures, or other required, or other work required on these plans shall also apply to the site plan approval and may require the submission of a site plan addendum. M, prior to the commencement of construction, the applicant shall submit to the engineering department a geotechnical report prepared by a professional engineer detailing the intended earthwork plan and soil specifications for the proposed backfilling that is required for the development of the site. The report shall include specifications for allowable soils to be used as backfill, backfilling methods, compaction and testing requirements, compaction equipment, et cetera. All soils, all soil to be used in fill areas shall be from an approved source and shall be approved by an engineering inspector prior to delivery and placement. On-site soil from cut area of the site may be used as fill provided it meets the soil's specification as required in said report. Second resolve, that the chairman of the planning board is hereby authorized to sign the final plat, thereby approving said plat after the town board has accepted a performance bond of satisfactory amount. Third resolve, that the conditional final approval of said final plat shall expire 180 days after that date of resolution and within 62 days after the chairman of the planning board signs the final maps of this plat, unless said plat has been duly filed or recorded by the owner in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. And Planning Board Resolution Number Blank-2017, authorization to sign performance bond estimate number 1167 map of Country Point at Smithtown West. Whereas the town departments of engineering, traffic safety, and planning have prepared a performance bond estimate to cover the cost of all required public improvements. Now therefore be it, first resolved that the chairman of the planning board is authorized to sign the performance bond estimate for number 1167 map of Country Point at Smithtown West in the amount of $1,392,665 and establish an inspection fee of $111,414 and a cash deposit of $34,500. Therefore, the amount of the performance bond we posted with the town shall be $1,358,165.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Benson Pizzoli with offices at 200 Robbins Lane in Jericho, New York, for the applicant this evening, 347 Building LLC. First, let's take care of housekeeping and let the record reflect that I painted up my affidavit posting. I listened and I read very carefully the planning department's report and recommendation, and we concur in that report and recommendation. I have one minor quibble, but it's not substantial. There was a note in the, in the report section of the resolution that said that eight units would be affordable, 11%. Actually, that should be seven units, which would be 10% as required by law. The confusion was caused by the fact that we've designated the E and F style units to be affordable. There's eight, but only seven of those will be affordable. There's not much to add on the planning side, but I thought some people might be curious, so I thought I'd give the board and anyone who's interested in this project some, some facts and figures. We're proposing 69 two-bedroom unit townhouses, three different styles. We call them suites, villas, and townhouses. Seven of the units, as I explained, will be affordable pursuant to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, which is a law that will be administered for the applicant by the Long Island Housing Partnership. So all, one of the conditions of approval, we're required to show how compliance will be administered. It will be done through the Long Island Housing Partnership, and they will contract with us to administer the affordable housing requirements on behalf of the town. They're experts at that. They'll, they'll have a better explanation for how they do it than I will. The prices, the estimated prices, they are not firmly set yet, but we're about to submit our first draft of an offering plan to the State Attorney General's Office. The current pre-offering plan prices range from $550,000 to $675,000. This is a senior citizen, age-restricted community. 80% of the units will be restricted to persons of 55 years and older. The remaining units will be non-age-restricted. This project will have a gatehouse with electronic security. If the homeowners association so desires to man that facility, it will be set up for manned security as well. The project will contain a 1,500-square-foot clubhouse, a pool, a gym, and a rec room or card room, if you will. The site will be serviced by an on-site sewage treatment system, which is currently pending approval from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. It has received approval from the Suffolk County Sewer Agency, and Mr. Robert Braun from the county attorney's office is currently drafting a construction agreement for our review and execution. If anyone has any questions, board members, audience, I'm happy to answer them. I should indicate for the record that our site plan engineer, Mr. Kevin Walsh, is also here to answer any questions. And before I take a breath and sit down, I did recall from the last hearing, Mr. Chairman, that you had expressed an interest in preserving trees along the northern boundary of this property adjacent to existing neighborhood. So I asked Mr. Walsh, do you have an evidence to take the tree locations of the and indicate trees in the bumper areas that will be preserved? And as you can see through this map, every existing tree that was part of the survey will be preserved along the north of the property. This will most likely be a condition of site plan review if you want to convey that recommendation.
Yes, as I report from my visit to the site, there are sort of, you know, quite large trees, I think, which buffer sound from 347 to the residence, you know, the residential neighborhood in the back, so I'm pleased to see that.
That will, every little bit helps, and I should note for the record that the SUC has been located near 347, so that'll create additional separation between the new homes and the highway. I don't want to leave the board with the impression that this is the only landscape that will remain. We're going to supplement the existing trees to allow that to be planned to create an adequate, more an adequate buffer for the kind of the joint structure of the new residence.
Thank you. Any members of the board?
Didn't we discuss it the last time about the gates and access from the back streets coming in there?
Yes, that was, that was a, that's a great question. That was resolved. That, that, that suggestion, if you will, came from the New York State Department of Transportation. We had at preliminary an extensive discussion about that, and, and I think just about everyone came to the conclusion that it was, that it was not a great idea. And our traffic engineer, who worked with Mr. Walsh, with the assistance and much appreciated cooperation of the planning department, wrote back to the State DOT and said it was not a desirable feature for this map, and that problem, if you will, has been eliminated.
So there's going to be no way to get in from the back?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That was the one spot of what, Haven Lane?
Haven Lane.
Yeah. So that's going to be fully fenced over, so no one's going to use it?
Correct, it's going to remain the way it is today.
Okay, good.
Any members of the public wish to be heard on this? We have several. Please come forward, state your name, address for the record.
Riorigeema 15 Haven Lane, A-U-R-I-G-E-M-M-A. I am a property owner there for over 40 years, and I will be most impacted by it. And I want to say thank you to everyone for talking about preserving the trees. I have, right now, I think there's a 50-foot buffer between my house and the...
This is a, excuse me, for the record, but this might be helpful to you.
I'm not too good at north, south, east, and west.
No, but I have an aerial photo, so you might be able to point your house, trees around this map. These are homes on Haven Lane.
Right, well, I'm the last house, I'm going to be dead, I'm going to be impacted on two sides of my property.
All right.
Okay, so I'm, like I said, I'm most impacted, and it's two sides of my property. And I just would like to know if the 50-foot buffer is going to be maintained and if it's going to be maintained with the natural growth.
The 50-foot, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please just come up to the microphone, so...
I didn't want to speak out of turn. The 50-foot is a minimum required setback under the town code, so that has, has to be maintained. It cannot be violated without variance. Your other question was?
Well, the natural growth that's there now, will that, would you leave that alone?
Yes, all existing vegetation that does not need to be removed for construction purposes will remain. Trees shown on this map will remain.
See, I'm trying to figure where I am.
What's your address?
Of 15 Haven Lane, at the dead end.
Okay, so you're right here, so you're this side or this side of the... You're on, so you're a lot right here. Okay, so these trees are going to remain for the remainder of the property. In addition, we're going to supplement that with new landscaping to further maintain the quality.
Well, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And that is the dead end for us.
We all thought that was a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, I was on Haven Lane, I drove around and I parked there and I observed, you know, the quietness of the street, and I think that was one of the things that, you know, I was definitely opposed to.
Well, I appreciate it very much.
And I, I observed the trees, and nobody, I think, is more adamant about preserving trees than I am, and at times I've probably been the lone vote against projects because I thought too many trees were being removed. So I certainly concur with your concerns and would be watching this as it progresses.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else wish to be heard?
Come to the mic.
My name is Edward Sanders from 370 Ridgefield Road in Hop Dog. I just have a couple of questions about, about this property, because I actually, I'm a developer myself. Quite a few years ago, we had looked at the old Smithtown General Hospital property, which this is. I was under the assumption that that property was never completely cleaned up, so that's one of my concerns. I don't know what reports came out or what was done, because I know all the, all the chemicals that they used to use for all the X-ray machines and all that stuff was all dumped into the ground, and it was documented way back when, and then they finally knocked the building down. So I just want to make sure, because it's a high water table in that area, that when we start doing all the construction in this area, it's not going to create a problem for the adjacent houses. So that's my first thing. Second thing is, I agree with you about the back entrance not being open to traffic, but with the fire, first of all, we all know that that portion of Route 111, I work in Smithtown, I live on the Hop Dog-Smithtown border, going up and down that road is a nightmare every day. God forbid there's a fire in its senior housing. Even if that gate is closed all the time, like the lakes at Honey Hollow and over at Hidden Ponds, there should be a gate at the back, even if they put some movable trees and planters, whatever, back there, because the fire department has to get in there at 3:30, 4 o'clock in the afternoon, they're never going to get to the houses in there. And if you have all seniors in there, it can be a real disaster on our hands. Just a second thing. The other thing is, are, these are being built under the Home Affordability Act, correct?
No.
No?
No, I'm after that.
Okay.
Continue.
Okay, that's the only other question I have about the home affordability. Okay, I mean, I think it's a great thing. I'm a realtor in the area also, and it's great putting senior housing in here, but like I said, it just concerns me that the traffic there is very, very tough. It's a good thing they're coming out of the traffic lane.
Well, I, I could point to Fairfield in St. James, which I think has something like 1,100 senior apartments, and there's only, there's one gate, and traffic, I think, on that roadway at times has, has been blocked or is heavy.
Like I said, I'm not looking to open it all the time and leave it open, I just think to have a second way of ingress egress in the event of emergency.
Yeah.
Just my opinion, but more than that.
Fairfield case, you know, demonstrates that, you know, one exit, one entryway works.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
First off, let me answer the second question. There is an emergency crash gate access for emergency vehicles. It's located on three forty-seven, if I'm correct, right Kevin?
Correct.
So there is access to that property. On the first question you had about the environmentals, I just want to state for the record that my client would never purchase a property that was not environmentally safe and sound. We did our environmental due diligence, we compiled Phase One reports and a Phase Two in part, and the property has been documented and remediated by both the State DEC for some open oil spills that occurred at the hospital many years ago, those have been closed. And the Health Department of Health Services has overseen the backfilling and remediation of a hundred and eighteen leaching pools that were found to have traces of minerals from prior hospital use. So the property is safe, the Planning Department adequately covered this subject in its report. We will not be able to obtain a building permit unless the Building Department is satisfied that we've done our job.
Anyone else wish to be heard? On this matter?
On another matter?
On another matter, okay. We'll address that, we don't have, normally have a public portion where we have public hearings, by law we require to deal with. Anyone else on this matter? Do we have a motion? Well, we have several resolutions here. Now, as I understand, to override the concerns of the county planning commission, we require a supermajority of four votes. It was a little bit unusual that we heard from them at such a late point and not during the preliminary hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I may...
I don't usually like to interrupt, but I have to just tell you that I was stunned, and I attended that meeting, and I can tell you for the record that the Town Board of this town has reviewed this project going back to two thousand and three. This project and this property has received a negative declaration from the Department of Environmental Water Waste at least four times, to my memory. And on all prior occasions, the Suffolk County Planning Commission recommended it as a matter of local determination. I can tell you that our representative, I can say our resident of the Town of Smithtown, but the delegate from the Town of Smithtown strenuously objected to this condition, and the commission actually took a motion to delete it, and it failed by one vote, it was a nine to eight vote. And most of the members that voted to exclude the condition were highly critical of the commission's staff for recommending it in the first place because it's not within their jurisdiction. So I just wanted to add that for the record.
Thank you. Okay, on the first resolution...
First public hearing.
We need to close the...
In the matter of number eleven sixty-seven map of Country Point at Smithtown West, I move that we close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the public hearing is closed, now to address the resolutions.
Start?
Yes.
Okay, in the matter of Planning Board Resolution Number Blank, two thousand and seventeen, Suffolk County Planning Commission Recommendation, number eleven sixty-seven map of Country Point at Smithtown West, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five zero, the resolution is adopted.
In the matter of Planning Board Resolution Number Blank, two thousand and seventeen, subdivision final approval, number eleven sixty-seven map of Country Point at Smithtown West, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the resolution is adopted.
And in the matter of Planning Board Resolution Number Blank, two thousand and seventeen, authorization to sign performance bond estimate, number eleven sixty-seven map of Country Point at Smithtown West, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
There being no further business?
We just had one other question. We apologize, we walked in late to the meeting, but one of the items that was addressed on here, we're just trying to find out who should have been doing it.
Please come forward, you're on the record, so we're taking this unusual step of revisiting someone here.
Well, only because the posting was done incorrectly, so we're trying to find out what happened, because half of our group went to the wrong building.
Please state your name again for the record.
Edward Sanders, three seventy Ridgefield Road in Hopock. What we just want to find out is what was the decision for the extension of preliminary subdivision for ten fifty-seven one-one, Ridgefield Estates in Hopock?
It was extended, and the report that we had is that they're still going forward with selling it to the county. So nothing is really going to change.
Okay.
They're still going forward with trying to sell it to the county, I think they said they were almost in contract?
Yeah, close to it.
Yeah, because I had spoken to them a while back.
We're dealing with issues with the Town of Islafer as far as something on the other side of the town.
So that's pretty much status quo on that one.
Okay, because the postings that they're putting up, it said that the meeting was at the senior center, and fifteen of us went to the wrong building tonight, so that actually the posting, that's what we're trying to find out, that's why we all walked in late, because we were trying to find out if a decision was made and we went to the wrong building because it was posted wrong. Because this assignment was on from...
Oh, okay.
Basically status quo.
Okay, that's all we're going to find out. Thank you, appreciate for...
Okay.
No problem, sir, might as well step up.
Yes, we have, normally, our planning board meetings here, unless there's any item on the agenda that...
Big house.
Not big house.
Because we walked some of there, that's why we all went there.
The signs should have had, they should have had the correct...
Yeah.
Oh, no, I believe them.
Yeah, yeah, they're all, yeah, they used to change them, if they could.
Yeah, but they, they got an old time.
Then after we got the elderly contingent of our neighborhood to go, to your neighborhood to the wrong building.
You take follow the same mistake I noticed, just, I don't know if I may normalize that, they've been using the wrong address to use that.
But we're glad you made it, it's good to see you.
There you go.
The address was sent correctly.
Well, it's the right address, but the wrong location.
I don't know, I'm saying that they probably have a template, news news have a template to use, because we send, the ad has the...
In today's world, these mistakes continue to perpetuate themselves. It's the world we live in.
There is, you really screw up, you need to get a unit, right? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, have a nice night.
You too.
There being no further business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that there being no opposition, we stand adjourned.